Twenty-three, full city council. The clerk will call the roll for attendance.
Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Bartley?
Here.
Gibner?
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
He's here.
Maldonado Velas?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
McGivern?
Here.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Here.
Puelo?
Here.
Israel Rivera?
Here.
Jenny Rivera?
Not here yet, she's on the way.
Tomlin?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
Please stand for pudge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
And the city of Hoyoke.
And the city goes.
We did draw the name. When doing roll calls, we'll start with Councilor Anderson Burgos. Councilor Jenny Rivera is on the way. With that, we'll go, item that's laid on the table still to keep there?
Yes.
Councilor Rivera just entered. So one will still stay there, public comment. No one signed up in the chamber, is anyone online? No hands online, so we'll move on to communications. Item two is a communication from the mayor appointing a member of the local historic commission, which would be Ms. Mazul. It'll be a three-year term, which will expire December 1st, 2025. That'll go to public service.
Mr. President, I'd like to suspend the rolls and just nominate, make a motion, nominate her on the floor. I've just got a second for that, I'll explain it.
I'll second that.
Has been seconded, Councilor Bartley.
Ms. Mazel has previously served for 20 years. Unless there's a council that really wants to meet with her, although she's available to me via email, she told me she'd be willing to come in if necessary, but I just said, if you want to avoid the exercise, since most of us know you all so very well and we admire all her commitment. So that's my motion, that's the reason for it.
Anyone further? So motion is to confirm the appointment, which will be a three-year term for Ms. Mazel for a local historic commission. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll go to the post. Number three is from the mayor, a letter appointing myself to serve as a member of the retirement board, which will expire January 1st, 2024.
Make a motion to receive.
Motion to receive.
I'd like to amend that, if I could make a motion to receive that and refer it to legal.
Sure.
Second.
Motion to receive, refer it to legal, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Four is from the auditor, which would be the 2022-23 pilot payments.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive it and refer it to Finance Committee, but can I just make a quick comment?
Sure. Councilor Bartley.
So first off, thank you to Tanya for her diligence on this. I look forward to having an ever-so-brief meeting in Finance. I know that there's been some discussion about some of the pilot payments. I previously had a meeting, a telephone meeting with the mayor, and I know he wants to talk about it. I just want to point out to Mr. President and to the board here that I've made representation in the past about Holyoke Housing Authority. It's based upon what we received in FY '19. That's the last pilot payment update that I have in my computer. I'm not saying this is the last one we received, it's the last one I had. And the pilot payment at that point was $3282. And I used to say it was about $4,000, so it's actually a lot less than that. I didn't notice any pilot payment in FY '22 for the housing authority. So, and I just want to point out one other thing, NG Mount Tom Solar, I didn't notice a pilot payment for them either, but I do have a pilot payment for them in FY '19. We could go down the list further, but the point being that it's my hope by having this data that once the mayor has it, he's going to put some thought into it and perhaps renegotiate some of these or not, but the hope is that he will. Thank you.
All right, to Finance, Councilor McGivern.
As Chair of Finance, be happy to have it on a future agenda, and certainly we'll invite the mayor in and the auditor. And if anybody's looking for any more specifics, they could just let me know, because it's nothing that we negotiate, it's just something that we should be aware of.
All right, so, Councilor Jordan?
Yeah, briefly, if the chairman could also have in the assessors would be helpful too, because it would be good for us to compare the total value, because they do still get a total valuation, it's just they don't get a bill. So it would be helpful for us to track the total valuation, so we come up with a fair number, but in light of the city situation, some of these need to absolutely be reviewed, especially when we consider services provided compared to what the bills are that are paid. So look forward to the discussion.
Councilor Bartley?
Yeah, just, and again, I agree with the Finance Chair completely, he's always on point, and I fully realize we don't at this body negotiate those, which is why I referenced the mayor. But the mayor, when I had my conversation offline with him, was unaware of several of these. I think he's aware of most of them, but he's unaware of several of them, and so my hope is that he'll compare what's going on now to past pilot payments and see if we can do a little bit better. That's all. Thank you.
All right, so that is to Finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Four, five is the minutes for December 20th. Motion to receive and adopt, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Six, I'd like to have a motion to take up six in late File A as a package.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So six is a list of appointments, of which A was forgot, we forgot to put it on there, and that is that City Council reappoint Francesca Nunez for the Community Preservation Committee, which will expire January 30th, 2026. So that's just adding that to the list on six. Councilor Bartley?
Just a quick point over, can I make a motion to package these and take them off at once, or do you have to do them individually, Mr. President?
You have to list candidates, so probably.
Yeah, you gotta list the candidates.
Okay.
So, I mean, I like, I like what you're offering.
No, I hear you. So I'll make a motion, go to the first ballot for whoever the president wants, what's the first one?
Administrative assistant.
Admin assistant.
Yep, so the first one on the list is the Administrative Assistant to the City Council, currently held by Jeffrey Anderson Burgos. It's a one-year term, which will expire January 2024. With that, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote, you're voting for whoever you'd like, but the current person is Jeffrey.
Bartley?
It started, it's starting with.
Well, he's.
Oh, I just caught, I just.
Well, he just got abstained.
Yep.
Well, yeah, that's what I was just, yeah, I figured he was just abstaining.
Madam Clerk, we have it as always. Jeff Anderson Burgos.
Gibner?
Jeffrey Anderson Burgos.
Jordan?
Jeffrey Anderson Burgos.
Maldonado Velas?
Jeffrey Anderson Burgos.
McGee?
Jeffrey Anderson Burgos.
McGivern?
Jeffrey the Wizard of Oz Anderson Burgos.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Jeffrey Anderson Burgos.
Puelo?
Jeffrey Anderson Burgos.
Israel Rivera?
Jeffrey Anderson Burgos.
Jenny Rivera?
Jeffrey Anderson Burgos.
Tomlin?
Jeffrey Anderson Burgos.
Bacon?
Jeffrey Anderson Burgos.
Jeffrey Anderson Burgos appointed on the first ballot.
Okay, congratulations. Mr. President, I'd make a motion to go to the first ballot for Assessor, please.
Second.
Motion to go to first ballot for Assessor, currently held by Ms. Burnell. It's a three-year term, which will expire January 2026. The clerk will call the roll with regards to the Assessor.
Anderson Burgos?
Ms. Burnell?
Bartley?
Debbie Burnell.
Gibner?
Deborah Burnell.
Jordan?
Deborah Burnell.
Maldonado Velas?
Deborah Burnell.
McGee?
Deborah Burnell.
McGivern?
Deborah Burnell.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Deborah Burnell.
Puelo?
Debbie Burnell.
Israel Rivera?
Deborah Burnell.
Jenny Rivera?
Deborah Burnell.
Tomlin?
Deborah Burnell.
Bacon?
Debbie Burnell.
Deborah Burnell appointed on the first ballot.
Okay, congratulations. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to go to the first ballot for Water Commissioner.
Second.
Motion to go to first ballot for Water Commissioner, currently held by Bill Harberlis. It's a three-year term, and it'll expire January 2026. The clerk will call the roll.
Anderson Burgos?
Mr. Bill Harberlis.
Bartley?
Bill Harberlis.
Gibner?
Bill Harberlis.
Jordan?
Bill Harberlis.
Maldonado Velas?
Bill Harberlis.
McGee?
Bill Harberlis.
McGivern?
Bill Harberlis.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Bill Harberlis.
Puelo?
Bill Harberlis.
Israel Rivera?
Bill Harberlis.
Jenny Rivera?
Bill Harberlis.
Tomlin?
Bill Harberlis.
Bacon?
Bill Harberlis.
Bill Harberlis appointed on the first ballot.
Congratulations. Mr. President, I'd like to make a congratulations, Bill. I'd like to make a motion to go to the first ballot for the Whiting Street Fund.
Motion to go to the first ballot for the Whiting Street Fund, currently held by Patrick Lavelle. It's a three-year term also, January 2026. The clerk will call the roll.
Anderson Burgos?
Patrick Lavelle.
Bartley?
Pat Lavelle.
Gibner?
Patrick Lavelle.
Jordan?
Patrick Lavelle.
Maldonado Velas?
Patrick Lavelle.
McGee?
Patrick Lavelle.
McGivern?
Patrick Lavelle.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Patrick Lavelle.
Puelo?
Patrick Lavelle.
Israel Rivera?
Patrick Lavelle.
Jenny Rivera?
Patrick Lavelle.
Tomlin?
Patrick Lavelle.
Bacon?
Patrick Lavelle.
Patrick Lavelle appointed on the first ballot.
Into late File A, we'll have to make a motion to.
I'll make a motion to go to the first ballot for.
Hold on, to take up final action first, so all those in favor?
Make a motion to suspend rules, take a final action on the late file?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to go to the first ballot for the CPA committee?
There's a second?
Second.
So that currently is with Ms. Nunez, it'll be a three-year term, also to expire January 31st, 2026.
Can you give us her first name again?
Francesca.
Thank you.
Anderson Burgos?
Ms. Francesca Nunez.
Bartley?
Ms. Nunez.
Gibner?
Francesca Nunez.
Jordan?
Francesca Nunez.
Maldonado Velas?
Francesca Nunez.
McGee?
Francesca Nunez.
McGivern?
Francesca Nunez.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Francesca Nunez.
Puelo?
Francesca Nunez.
Israel Rivera?
Francesca, Francesca Nunez. My bad.
Jenny Rivera?
Francesca Nunez.
Tomlin?
Francesca Nunez.
Bacon?
Francesca Nunez.
All right, congratulations.
Francesca Nunez appointed on the first ballot.
Congratulations to everyone.
Make a motion to take seven off the table, please.
Second.
Motion to take up seven. This is the city solicitor regarding the sale of 416 Appleton Street.
I'm supposed to make a motion, receive, and I just want to make a quick comment.
Motion is to receive, Councilor Bartley?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to everybody for, let me take this over two seconds. Very excited about this. This was through City Council, DGR Committee, for a lot of meetings, and to finally get it conveyed out is a big win. I hope everybody knows what this is, across the street from the YMCA, it's going to be used for parking for the Pine Street property owned by Mr. Vergilio. I can't remember the address, but that was.
185 Pine Street.
Thanks, Pete. That was dormant for 20 years at least, and so now he took it over, it's starting to look a lot better, and then now he's got this parking space. Councilor McGivern knows the whole history of it very well, we went over it a lot of times, it was really interesting, and it was next to what's the so-called People's Park. So this is going to be, I think, a tremendous win for this part of the city, so I'm very grateful that this went through, and it took a while, Mr. President, as you know, but we finally bore some fruit on it, so thank you.
Councilor Tomlin?
Yeah, I'm just really grateful too. Councilor Bartley, I know in that committee we dealt with this for a number of years. It seems like we're going back five, six years maybe on this issue, and I'm glad it did finally get solved and taken care of and conveyed to Mr. Vergilio. It'll work out great for parking for that apartment block right there on Pine Street, Pine and Appleton.
Anyone further?
Just to, if I could just add, Mr. President, there is a long history to the lot, but one of the most important things is not only is this going to be a great use for, you know, a good landlord and needed for the tenants of his building. The lot is non-buildable. It was the former of a points market with two or three apartments above it. After the fire, it was eventually torn down. It sat vacant for so many years, it was no longer, not grandfathered, but it was no longer, you know, in use, so you can't build on it because there's no frontage, and it just makes sense that this gets attached to a building, to a lot that's almost, with the exception of the alleyway, abutting it.
Yeah, Mr. President?
Yeah.
Just wanted, just a compliment to the Law Department and to our state delegation too, because as the president knows, this is Article 97 land, and it's this complicated business getting this, getting this out of that web. And so I had to go to Boston and back and forth, and so everybody did a great job, and I know it's not a big thing for maybe many of the viewers of this meeting, but it is a big thing for that part of the city. It's a big deal for the residents of 185, and so I'm just grateful, it looks like it finally got done, so hallelujah.
So from the Law Department, it says the city sold the above-referenced property to Eastside Hoyoke LLC, the deed is recorded in Hamilton County. Price was $6,067.84 real estate taxes were collected. There is a reverter clause, and it remains taxable parcel. So motion be received?
I'll hold.
In favor?
Second.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight is the.
Mr. President, we suspend the rolls and take eight through 12.
Okay.
Second.
Motion to suspend the rolls, take up eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12 as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Going to Finance, Pete?
So, eight is the budget, budget book. Nine is the sewer report. 10 is the sewer fund report. 11 is the year-end report, and 12 is the year-end report versus actual. So all those, all these to Finance?
Copies to Finance. Sorry, copies to Finance, a couple of them do require discussion. Any of them can have discussion if requested, but most of them are just for informational purposes.
All right, all to Finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
13 is the grant final report, Westeriahurst.
Mr. President, I wanted to make a motion, receive, just a quick comment.
Yeah, Councilor Bartley?
A motion, receive, is in order here, and so, and I also want to just refer a copy of this to our administrative assistant. I brought this up, I think, at a prior meeting. This is two meetings or three meetings in a row where we've had these reports, which complied with our city ordinance, which I was just reading the other day, and I'll get a copy of that to Jeff, so he has that handy dandy. And then I really, if I took it to Jeff, what I really want to do is get a form together, Jeff, and I think you could be very helpful in generating that, get it to the various departments, so then we have these grants that, you know, you're logging them on the form, and then they get the form out for this, and then they get it back to us with a report with a little bit of background. So this, the last couple of meetings, we've had some great reports, and I just want to keep these coming, so if you'd be so gracious, and I'll work with you on that, okay?
Okay.
Mr. Mitch, if you remember, it was an online form that we raised.
All right, so as Jeff said, this is a result of an online form that we created, correct?
Oh, even better.
So.
So you already had it, fantastic, thank you.
Councilor McGivern?
Just to add, I think it's an excellent idea, I would not tell our administrative assistant what to do, he has far better organizational skills than I do, but perhaps we could have a location, an archive of all these reports as they come in, so if we need in the future to refer to them, we would have what happened, you know, back in 2020 or 2019, just to be able to look up how the grant was used.
Fantastic idea.
And just for people at home, this is the grant for the veterans.
The uniforms and all that.
Uniforms that Jesus Prayer put out. If you have a chance to go into there and check it out, it's actually really nice what they did, so thank you to Jesus for his work. That is to receive, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 14 is the Mass Office of Community Development Final Notice and Public Review for Wetland Anniversary Hill Park. Motion be received? Do you want to keep this with Finance, because there's an update as to what's going on up there?
We've been doing our grants in Finance, that's okay.
Yeah, so send it to Finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 15 is a letter regarding Malcolm LLP effective January 1, 2023, it's a merger.
We could receive and refer to Finance, if there's going to be new outside auditors, I'd like to maybe invite them in just to meet them, or if it's going to be the same people under a bigger umbrella, that's fine too, just to get a little more information.
Councilor Jordan?
A friendly suggestion to the chairman, I also think it would be in good form for this council at least once a year to review the annual management report from the outside auditors and to have a discussion. I think we, there's a lot of key players in the city that have very little to no interaction. We're finding out about the Flynn gentleman who's apparently investing and overseeing the stabilization fund. That was a recent revelation, still waiting to have them come back. There's still a standing invitation by the Finance Committee, I don't know when the treasurer, if he's watching, we're going to have that meeting. But these representatives, it would be good to have, once a year, to have them come in and review the prior year management report and to go through it. I think that would be a good habit for us to begin. Thank you.
Anyone for, Councilor Bartley?
Yeah, and maybe this is a point of order, maybe the president or the Finance Chair could help me with this, but I was pretty sure we had the auditor or some, a person with a lot more financial expertise than me come in and say to us, well, it's great that you have an auditor, but to have the same auditor year after year after, I mean, Melance and Heath has kind of been it for my whole time on this board, so my question would be, do we put that out to bid? Is that, is that RFP'd? I don't think it is, because I'm pretty sure CPA stuff is exempt under 30B1, so it would be nice if we, as a city, I'm not saying they're doing a bad job, but I'm just saying, just to have a fresh set of eyes, a fresh perspective is probably not the worst thought we could come up with, just food for thought, that's all.
With that, this is to receive, send to Finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 16 is a letter sent to the mayor regarding speeding on Hillside Ave, so this would be received, send to public safety?
Public safety.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
President's Report, first, good evening and good night to Miles, Molly, and Mac. Get to sleep. Now, they said to say hi tonight, so hi, guys and girls. Also, to everyone here, Happy New Years, welcome to 2023. With that, we did get an update, Jeffrey got an update from us from our pictures, they'll be coming in next week. So the frame picture is finally on the way. It's only been, you know, 20 years, but, you know, we got it, we got it. So that one is on its way. Also, we are entering the 150th anniversary for the city, and I know the mayor has got several committees up and running, so I say to everyone here, if you have thoughts, comments, suggestions, you know, get it to those committees, reach out to the mayor, reach out to Jeffrey, he's heavily involved. It's going to be a great year. Councilor Anderson Burgos?
Yeah, I just, sorry, I have a lot on my mind. So the end of 2022 was horrible, horrible for me and families, so three people, two who I grew up with, passed away, and out of respect for the families, I won't mention two of the names, but one was a great friend of mine, a neighbor, who was left behind two children, Jeff Delude, Jeffrey Delude. It was a shock to the friends and family who knew him, and I just wanted to offer a moment of silence for the three individuals. Thank you.
Absolutely, so a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Also, our captain of the flower fund has contacted me today. Normally, and COVID's kind of throwing us off, is normally we have a holiday party every year, I thought it was every two years, so we'll be looking into that to kind of catch us up, and we're going to go with the Bartley Amendment on this one.
Thank you.
All right. Worked out very well.
Full dinner, sit down there, we'll do the apps and stuff, it'll be up to.
That's not the Bartley Amendment.
It's a Bartley Amendment. So I'll start working on that.
Thank you.
I apologize, I thought it was every two years, but Joe, we've been off for a little bit, so we'll get on that. If you're not part of the flower fund, please contact Kelly to make sure you do join if you want, we're not telling you to do it, but if you do, this is one of the things that goes with it. Also coming up is St. Patrick's Day, there'll be a lot of requests for, you know.
Hispanic festival.
Hispanic festival, so things are coming up where we, in essence, use the flower fund to do ads and everything else to help out. With that, I think I'm caught up, anyone else? Councilor Jordan?
Back on your thing about the pictures, I noticed that somehow the city council photos, if I'm correct, have gone MIA since 2013, so we're a few years behind. And so we're about 10, 10 years of photos, so that's, you know, one every two, so that we're about five photos behind. Can we find out the whereabouts of those? I don't know if any of them are held hostage somewhere, but one of them's over there?
It's held hostage in that.
What year is, are those?
I think that was six years back?
Six years back, okay.
So what we're doing is, the one that's coming in is from last term.
Okay.
We're missing the one from that prior.
Okay.
So that, we are, everything's paid up, that was the big issue, everything got sidetracked on payment.
Money, we didn't pay our bills?
We're now caught up on that, thanks to this dude right here.
Beautiful, that's why I voted for him.
But now it's, and those photos are already there.
Okay.
They just have to put it together.
Okay.
So that'll be worked on next, but.
Jeff's working on tracking down the other ones, maybe?
Well, it's, maybe it has been delivered in hiding.
Okay.
But we know that one's still hiding in the cardboard box.
All right. We'll do an unveiling one night.
Counsel Bacon.
Oh, I lost my thought, so it must have been unimportant.
No, no, no. Counsel Bartley.
I hope, a couple of people in this room have been awarded this, been granted this award, but the Council for Human Understanding has their annual MLK Junior Breakfast on the 13th at Hamels. Now, I assume that's still going forward in light of the fire, but as far as I know, it's going, so it's 8:00 AM on the 13th.
Oh, I remember--
8:00 AM on the 13th. Counsel Bacon, back here.
It was just a quick question. I was just wondering how many counselors are in the Flower Fund right now?
From Counsel McGee, I think he said it was--
We began at 10 or 11, and there's a question that we're gonna put to the Human Resource Treasurer to make sure if everybody stayed in. We never had 13. I think we actually started with 11 or 12.
It's a work in progress. Kind of like the--
No, it's not unusual. It's a little bit--
I was just curious.
Yeah. And it's, I think it'd be with a new Human Resource Director, I think there might have been some confusion because some people thought that they had located, but the money wasn't being taken out, so they're trying to correct it.
Counsel Rivera.
I just wanted to say, I don't know if you all know, but Officer Imo Morales suffered a heart attack. Yeah, which he is also the son of the custodian here, Papo. So I wasn't sure if with the Flower Funds, we could send him a little get well.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Counsel Jordane.
Yes, I wasn't sure if I was gonna mention this or not, but with the mentioning of the Council on Human Understanding, I would be remiss if I did not mention, since our last meeting, we lost a tremendous Hollyoker, Dolores Stein, who was for decades the runner of that event. She was a titan in the Jewish community here in Hollyoke. Her and her husband Marty, who we lost many years ago, just the salt-of-the-earth type people, just wonderful, wonderful people. And Dolores was a bedrock leader in the community at Rodafne Shaloma, North Hampton Street, and she's gonna be dearly missed, just a lovable person, true Hollyoker in every sense of the way. You know, just really thought about this community. Her whole life was dedicated to serving other people. And I did not want it to be passed, since we are mentioning that, a very important event. It must be said about Dolores's contribution to this community. Thank you.
Absolutely. Anyone further? All right, so with that, we'll go to reports of committees. There was no ordinance. Finance, 18A. Finance, who is acceptance of the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development, a $25,000 no-match grant. Motion to be received, adopt, pass the first reading. Counsel McGee.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had Aaron Vega from the OPID Department before the committee. The committee does recommend that we accept this no-match grant. As you stated, it is $25,000. The scope of work will include some consulting services. They're gonna provide a strategical financial consultant that assists the community and businesses with the gaining of a much-needed creative capital. A lot of this, these incubator programs have been becoming successful within the city, and you see some of the smaller storefronts are being occupied and being multiple-use, sometimes occupied by more than one business and sometimes just for special events. Aaron made a presentation. The Finance Committee thinks it's well worth keeping this round going.
Anyone further? Motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is passed the second reading. Clerk of Colorado, if you vote yes, you're voting for the grant.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puello?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one. 18B, the New England Foundation for the Arts, 2023, $15,000 grant, no-match. Motion to be received, adopt, pass the first reading. Counsel McGee.
Thank you, Mr. President. NEFA, if I'm saying it correctly, is the disposer of this grant, and as you stated, no-match. Mr. Vega was before us. This promotes artists in Hollyoke, and I think it's tremendous. It kind of doesn't go hand-in-hand with the grant we just talked about, but what it does do is, first of all, it requires and provides training to a number of staff members within the city itself. And then it just, you know, as a municipality, it promotes public space for any Massachusetts artist, apparel tracked towards artists interested in public art-making and try to bring them into a location where their art can be displayed and perhaps it can be sold, in some cases, and some money made for the artists, but more important, to keep their work going. It's part of, again, the economic development stuff that, you know, smaller stuff, but important stuff that communities should be doing. Committee recommends that we allow the grant to be accepted and spent.
Anyone further? Motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading. Clerk of Colorado, if you vote yes, you're voting for 18B.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puello?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one. 18C, Commandant Finance, who referred $1,445 from billing codes and inspections to others which would pay a bill this year for a prior year. Motion to be received, adopt, pass the first reading. Counsel McGee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Without a billing inspector, we did have the mayor and the auditor before us. They both assured us that the invoice has been vetted, that it is, it was a good invoice that just slipped through the cracks at the end of the fiscal year. The vendor is Forbes and Wheeler. There is a number of items that the Building Department used, need to pay for this service, which is part of the ongoing issues in the Building Department with the vacancies and so many positions. But after listening to the mayor, we, Finance Committee agrees that this year's money should be allowed to be used for last year's bill.
Anyone further? Motion is to pass first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is passed the second reading. Clerk of Colorado, if you vote yes, you're voting to pay the bill.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puello?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one. 18D, Commandant Finance, who referred that the City Council accept the fiscal year 21 CPA MIFA Victory Theater mural project. Recommend that be adopted. Motion to be received, adopt.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a number of people before the committee for this. The Vice Chair of CPA, Mike Falsetti, filled in for their Chair, Megan McGrath, and Mike did a tremendous job of dotting the i's and crossing the t's and explaining to us what the changes are in the mural project with the Victory Theater. A quick reminder is, we had approved that during the phase of raising the monies for saving the Victory Theater, MIFA, who was in charge of both the fundraising and in charge of the building itself, had come to the CPA and then came to the City Council and Mayor to look for funds to take down the murals. These are beautiful murals, and they're, they got some value to them. There's two of them, they're 30-foot, 30-foot in length, and they're just something else to see. So the new agreement is, and it's a scope of change, that should come back before the city to make sure we're all on the same page, is that the preservation is the first thing that happens, is they take the murals down and they're gonna preserve them. They have a vendor who's going to do that. The vendor is experienced and well-qualified. The storage will take place. It was originally gonna be within City Hall. There's some questions about whether there's an appropriate or safe space within City Hall. However, what's more important is language that makes sure if, and Don Sanders was with this too, so I was careful how I worded this in committee, but if by some chance, you know, the money isn't raised to save the Victory or the project doesn't go through, the city does have first right and option to own the murals and to be able to display them, which I think is most important. Some counselors asked about the Victory Theater. There's been a lot of press going on lately, and we learned that they're over 60% of the goal. They're about to do the, at this point now, they're about to do a capital drive, which is not just within the city of Hollyoke, obviously, but a regional, very expanded regional capital drive itself. And they're getting very optimistic that the end of the tunnel is in sight, and they're working hard to make those dreams come true. It's not a movie theater, as everybody, most of us, remember it. It's Broadway, it's a vaudeville stage, and with all the decor that goes with it once it's restored, it's gonna be one of the finest in the Commonwealth itself.
Anyone further? See, none's motion is to receive this and adopt it? Because we already, didn't we already approve it? Or is this another?
No, we're adapting. I believe the motion should be to adopt the request for a scope of change.
Scope of change.
Yep.
All right. So do a roll call just for this, because it's CPA. Clerk of Colorado, if you vote yes, you're voting for this.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puello?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approved it. 18E, Commandant Finance, who has hereby transferred 1,000 from Board of Health Floating Clerk to Board of Health Overtime. Motion to be received, adopt, pass the first reading. Counsel McGee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sean Gonzalez, although he was on vacation last week, did send, I believe everybody got a copy of it, a brief communication of explaining the need for the overtime. He had originally asked for $10,000. That was cut during the budget hearing process itself. Through COVID and throughout the extra work that his office has seen, there has been a number of different times where overtime is necessary. This particular line item goes to a floating clerk. After listening to the mayor, who endorsed it, always endorses it up front, but also spoke in favor of it, the committee agrees that the transfer should be allowed. It's $1,000 into overtime.
Anyone further? Motion is passed first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading. Clerk of Colorado, if you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puello?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one. 18F, Commandant Finance, who referred request of 10,000 from Park Maintenance to Overtime Forestry. Motion to be received, adopt, pass the first reading. Counsel McGee.
Thank you, Mr. President. The mayor, Amy from the DPW, our acting superintendent and superintendent, was before us. We'd held this up in committee to make sure that we had a good understanding of what was going on with this particular transfer, and we did learn a couple of things by doing that. One, and there's a plan to correct this, one is the overtime accounts for forestry, and there are other line items of overtime accounts within the DPW budget itself, are, when it comes to a foreman, is not just used for what you would think for emergencies with the forestry department. Foremen by contract each take a week on call. And I don't know how many foremen there are, if there's five or six, you know, every other month or every third month or so, the foreman has a week where they answer all calls of any emergency. The forestry department could be answering a call for streets, you know, could be answering a call for a traffic light down to be able to contact the fire department, could be answering, you know, it could be answering a forestry emergency, a dead tree in the middle of a road, which you can't wait until Monday to, you know, or overnight to get rid of. So it's kind of deceiving when you look at the need to put $10,000 into the overtime of the forestry account, but Amy and the mayor convinced us that, you know, they are gonna work with the auditor to correct that, so we'll have a better accountability of when it's actually forestry overtime in the future. But it's replacing money that was, again, was similar to the last one, reduced during the budget hearing process. We learned a few other things too, which I don't think it's part of the discussion tonight, but we sent the message about the forestry truck. We'll just leave it at that.
Counsel Bartley.
Actually, that's a great report. I actually want to hear the rest of that report, to be honest with you, but just through the chair to the chair. Joe, if they're gonna have an on-call person, who gets to make, who's making, who's calling in? And what number are they calling? And who's answering the phone over the weekend? How is it, how's that being communicated to the public?
You're testing my memory, if I could, Mr. President, but if you go on the website, there is an emergency call number, like it's, a lot of times it's used during snowstorms or more noteworthy during snowstorms. But, you know, if it's, like I said, a tree down, a branch down in the middle of a road, something that's obstructing a roadway, something that needs to be moved, you know, there is a number, and I believe it's, it's a, it's an emergency nighttime number. I'm trying, I can't visualize it, but I know it's there.
Just, Mr. President?
Yeah.
Just could I just make a friendly amendment? Could we just ask the administrative assistant just to ascertain that number and just to send that out? Because I get those calls regularly. What, who do I call on Friday night or Saturday or whatever to take care of this? I don't know.
We'll get you the info.
All right, thank you.
And sometimes people will call the police department, you know, you know, it could be a vehicle, you know, hindrance, and the police department will relay it. They know there's a foreman on duty too.
Yeah, even better. That's good, Joe. Thanks.
So motion is passed first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is passed the second reading. Clerk of Colorado, if you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puello?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one. Motion to be take G and H as a package?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? G is 2,000 from Safety Inspector to Waste Recycling Coordinator. That would be returned back to the auditor. 18H is the Hollyoke School Department anonymous donation of a million-plus, and that's returned back to the auditor.
This is a request of the mayor and the auditor. The $2,000 one, Amy actually explained this one to us, is simple. Was needed because the particular line item in the wastewater recycling coordinator was short-changed for the full amount of the salary for the person who was filling it. However, that person left the city for, and leaving the position briefly vacant enough to cover the money needed for the rest of the year she has, I believe, filled the spot or about to start a person in that position, but has plenty of money in the line item to take care of the new person. So we can return it to the auditor.
Anyone further? Counsel Jordane.
Yeah, just a friendly suggestion, and hopefully we have the good fortune to get some more anonymous donations in the future, but when it was explained to us for us to quote-unquote "approve" the anonymous donation coming in, it was anonymous to us, but people actually, as this came out in the committee hearing, but this could have been sped along a lot faster, they know who this person is, and I should say the company is. As it turns out, it was just anonymous publicly, but that was not explained at the beginning, that the city actually knows, they've just signed a non-disclosure agreement that they wouldn't release publicly the name, but they know who it is. Like, that's kind of a really important detail that should have been shared right up front, that it's a private corporation, and they're making this, and by the way, they want to do lighting in the seven schools. I mean, there was a lot of cloak and dagger before we got to where the finance committee got to the bottom of where it was, and as it turns out, it does meet the statutory allowance under the three categories of ones that a receiver or a school committee can directly approve. It really never needed city council approval. That's why we're able to send it back to the auditor, but if those details could have just been out in the beginning, we could have fast-tracked that thing right through.
You're right.
So, just friendly thoughts for if we have the good fortune to have one of those again, but we're obviously very thankful to have it.
Councilor Anderson Burgos.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that the reason why a lot of the information wasn't disclosed is because there was legal contract, and so things could not be said, so there were stuck between, you know, what can be and what cannot be, and a lot of it left us in the dark, unfortunately, but it was not intentional by any means.
Councilor Anderson Burg, I mean, Councilor McGivern.
Thank you. I just want to thank the vice chair for giving the committee report.
Yeah, thanks, Kevin.
And he did, he did a fine job.
He did a great job.
As Kevin stated, though, you know, we got, what we felt more comfortable with was the answer to the anonymous part. It's not that there's anything wrong with that, it's just that, you know, rightfully so, hopefully always, you have to know where it's coming from, because there could be hidden agendas. But the second part was, I thank Kathleen Deegan from the, our assistant city solicitor, who did some research on who does actually get under receivership the right to approve this. Normally, the school committee would approve grants that go to the, that are received by the school, by the public schools. The school committee has a policy. I learned that anything $5,000 in order, they will vote on, $5,000 and up, and that, you know, especially if, anything that there's a match to itself within their budget. But there was a lot of question about this. This was put in front of us, not at our request, and then they said, well, wait a minute, doesn't really belong in front of you, but too late. We had questions, so we got our questions answered.
Councilor.
And the vice chair did a good job of explaining that.
Thank you.
Councilor Bartley.
Actually, I'm grateful to both the chair and the vice chair for doing this, because we got a lot more information, but for them, asking the questions and sending it back to committee, so they should both be credited. And we did receive an email, so I was wondering if the president would be, you don't have to read it, Todd, but I'm just wondering if the president would be so gracious, or if we could just file this a communication for the next meeting and put it on an agenda, so it can just be public as to where the money's going, because this is another mystery, which I get a lot of emails on, and I don't know, I have no idea what to, how to respond to these emails, because anonymous, I don't have any details, but now, at least because of the due diligence, the finance committee, we do have some details, so is that?
Yeah, we'll have it for communication next agenda.
For next agenda, just as Mr. Soto's email, as a communication. That would be great. Thank you.
Anyone further? So, motion is to refer both back to the auditor. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No public safety, no public service, no DGNR, no charter and rules, no joint committee. On to motion orders and resolutions. First one is 24 from Councilor Bartley, Councilor Jordan, that the city installs solar-powered pedestrian crosswalks at Hitchcock Street where it intersects with Martin Street. There's a constituent request. So this would be receive, adopt, refer to the mayor and city engineer.
Yeah, that's my motion. It's under discussion.
Yep.
I did review this with the city engineer, and he was lacking load on all this, and so now we just got to hit the, figure out the finance. I know that most of us are very familiar with that intersection, including the horrific tragedy that happened even before I was born, believe it or not, and, and with a multi-person death at that intersection, but there have been multiple other ones over the years, and now we've got some momentum with community engagement, and as I said, dog walkers, pedestrians going to school, lots of sacrament, going to the charter. I mean, I see kids every single morning walking there, young people, I should say, walking every single morning there, so that would be a tremendous win for the neighborhood if we could pull that off. Thank you.
All right, so motions, receive, adopt, refer to the mayor and city engineer. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 25 is from Councilor Bartley with the celebration of the 150th anniversary that we invite in to DGNR, Chair Vega, as well as any other committee members to figure out the plans.
I knew you were going to say in the presidency report, so just refer to DGNR, please.
All right, to DGNR, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 26 is from Councilor Bartley. A zone change to Hoyok's marijuana ordinance be adopted to extend the time from two to three years for that special permit, so this would go to ordinance?
Yeah, just under discussion. I hope we all saw the 11-3 letter. I thought it was a really well-written and reasoned letter, and, so this is going to have to be a public hearing, for sure, but we should consider, I'm not saying we have to do it, we should at least consider adopting a three-year window for special permits. It's a very costly, time-consuming measure, and so it's my hope that we'll at least talk it out in committee and see where it goes. Thanks.
To ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 27 from Councilor Bartley, that the city engineer, please review quality of road surfaces. There's the list here. Please report back to the city council with the communication for February.
Yeah, thank you.
So, receive, adopt, refer to DPW engineer and mayor. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 28 from Councilor Bartley, that the city council continue its tradition, inviting in the first meeting of March, members of the St. Patrick's Day Committee and their dignitaries. Motion be receive and refer to our administrative assistant.
Yeah, just under discussion, I'm very proud of being part of this, and I'm very proud of this tradition that we all started six, seven, eight years ago, whatever it was. It really makes for a nice way to start the, start the green season, and I've already secured the commitment of the, of the Caldorian Band, so we'll have a little music here, too, so.
Super.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Councilor Tomlin first.
Yeah, Mr. President, if we could go back to 27, if they can make an amendment, if the Councilor Bartley don't mind, to add on Briarwood Drive. I happened to be up there the other day, there's some, there's some kind of a leak or a spring from Upper Briarwood, and that street, that whole street up there is just, it was all ice up. Actually, a truck had to go up there and clear off the ice, and it's all potholes. I mean, it may be on a list to be replaced, but it's in terrible condition. If anybody gets a chance up there in Wyckoff Park, it's really in bad shape.
Motion to reconsider our action on 27 for the purposes of making an amendment?
Motion reconsider, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to add Briarwood Drive?
Second. Motion to add Briarwood Drive at the end of the list.
Under discussion.
Uh, Councilor Bartley.
Yeah, I just, this is a little unique, kind of a way I wrote this order, but instead, I just assumed maybe we could get this, these things done a little bit faster by getting a, why do we have to have a whole hearing on it, Mr. President? Why can't, I mean, the point is just have the city engineer take a look at it. I have no problem with other councils adding the other streets on here or filing similar orders. It's just something I, I thought would just make it a little more efficient. That's, I'm not trying to undermine any one or whatever, I just want to see if we get a quicker answer. So adding streets on here, I think is, or filing additional orders, I think that's very welcome.
All right, so adding Briarwood Drive as an amendment, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So 27 was to receive, adopt, send to DPW, city engineer, and mayor with the amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Back to 28, which was to receive, adopt, send to our, send to Jeffrey. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 29 is from Councilor Givner. Please install information on no engine brake signs on Hamden Street and Muller Bridge. So motion be receive, adopt, send to DPW, a copy to public safety? So, you just want to to public safety, copy to DPW, or?
Sure.
Yeah.
Could just receive and adopt?
Adopt for DPW.
We're going to say receive, adopt, to get them out there, but they report back to us and say it was done or not. Okay.
Mr. President?
Yep, Councilor Paul.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I do want to take the time to thank Councilor Bartley for working on an order with me, where we got these installed on the city gateways, and I think we've actually gotten some pretty positive feedback on that, which is awesome.
I have it.
And just number two, if this is going to be adopted, I was going to offer a friendly amendment if the maker was okay with it, so it actually got a little controversial when we filed the order, and I think one of the, one of the things that we agreed on was that at the end of it, that we would add except for an emergency, so just to keep the consistency, that's all, if we could add that at the end of the sign. Thank you.
I'll second, I'll second that.
So amend that no engine brake unless there's an emergency should be installed on the sign. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Which then is receive, adopt, send to DPW, copy to public safety. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 30 is from Councilor Givner. Please conduct a traffic study in Hamden to help mitigate the use of track, truck routes and address the heavy traffic volume on Hamden. Motion to send a public safety copy to city engineer. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 31 from Councilor Givner. Please address the safety concern for motorists traveling on Locust Street between Hampshire and Cabot. This would be to send a public safety copy to the city engineer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Councilor Tomlin?
Yeah, I talked to Councilor Givner, if I could be added on to that. I'm very familiar with that by the two nursing homes there, with the parking there, it's been an issue for a number of years, so I think that's something that's going to be looked at, and hopefully we can get some enforcement up there, so cars coming up Locust Street to try to turn onto Cabot can have a clear view of the traffic.
All right, so adding Councilor Tomlin, Councilor Bartley?
Yeah, I have a very similar to that. I think I filed it in the last month or so, only because I have a very dear, dear friend that lives in that vicinity, and she's seen some horrible accidents and a lot of near misses, so I would like to see if we can get some feedback from city engineer sooner rather than later.
All right, so this is the public safety and the city engineer. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 32 from Councilor Malanavales, order that the chief of police, business owners, and residents that live in those communities are invited to discuss safety measures to prevent shootings. Supposed to be to?
Public safety.
Public safety.
Copy to chief and?
And copy police.
License board.
Owners. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 33. 33 from Councilor Malanavales, order that the license board is invited to discuss the process of ensuring that all businesses operate within our, the city are licensed, so that would be to?
I was going to say public safety, because it kind of goes with the last one, but?
All right, so to public safety, and then say it to the license board for follow-up. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 34 from Councilor Malanavales, order that we create a ballot question, asking if there should be a recall process for all elected officials, so that would go to charter and rules.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Just a friendly one on that one, Mr. President. The council has twice adopted a recall, and just so everybody's crystal clear on the process, we adopt it, goes to mayor, mayor sends it to legislature, governor signs or don't signs, then it has to go to the ballot, okay? Twice, council adopted this overwhelmingly, and has been vetoed by the mayor, twice. So, just so we're all on the same page about that. So, I would love for us to get something, you know, I think we've all been, most of us been in favor of this, so I pass that on to charter and rules, that you don't have to look far to look as to what we wrote and adopted multiple times before, so it's, but we have to get the mayor on board.
That'd be prior mayor, not this mayor.
Correct, not Mr., not Mayor Garcia. These were prior, I believe it was, I think it was Morse 1 and Morse 2, and then actually, yes, and then the council had, I'll defer to others, because I wasn't here, but I believe it was passed, it was gonna, and then somehow it fell off the table, and then it expired or something happened. I don't know. I'll let others who were here last year discuss that, but.
Well, next was Councilor Murphy Rambeletti.
I just had a question, if that included city council on the recall?
So, the prior ones, no.
At the time, no.
Because of the timeframe, it was only two, since it's a two-year term.
Right.
The one that was approved by us and sent off was for all four-year terms.
Four-year terms, right.
But not us?
Not us.
Okay.
Well, when would you, when would you recall a two-year official?
That was, I literally was just asking as a clarifying question.
So, we were not, just so everyone knows, we were not added being the council, because since it was a two-year, you get elected, you're in, if someone does a recall, by the time the recall goes through, you're already in an election year, so it's already, kind of like it's a recall.
Okay, well, thank you.
Councilor Anderson Burgos?
I just want to state that this specific order includes all elected officials, though, so it is different from previous orders. I just, that's what I, sorry, that's what I meant when I said all. It's all on this order, so it's different.
Yep.
Yeah.
Councilor Bacon.
So, I just wanted to clarify that the four-year recall language was sent to Mayor Murphy at the time?
Yeah.
And then somehow it didn't get to the legislature, but then when Mayor Garcia came in, he wouldn't act on it, but it was work that had occurred before he got into office, so it was sort of in limbo when he came in. So everybody's looked at it, but nobody's done anything with it so far. Thanks.
So, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So he could have signed it?
He could have.
Okay, so he, so actually Mayor Garcia, I guess, is involved, because he chose not to sign it.
We can ask.
So we'll have to get that figured out with, yeah, we'll have to have him in, so we're all on the same page.
So, Councilor Bartley.
Yeah, I just, I guess I'm going to, just to say the same thing everybody else has said, this is for all elected officials. I just think that this order is probably just dead on arrival, to be honest with you, Mr. President, because just for a practical purpose, I think it'd be virtually impossible to have either school committee or, especially those who are not at large, so they have four-year terms, but school committee with two-year terms and city council with two-year terms, be pretty tough to even get it on a ballot, because we just go right into election year. That's why I think this is not well-thought-out, and that's why I think when we had the orders about the four-year terms, it wasn't to target anybody, it was just that it was a reaction to what constituents were saying about the four-year slot, which is some of those are very, one in particular is very new, and that was really the reason. If councillors were a four-year term, I would have zero problem with having this be based, that they be subject to recall, but any elected official with a two-year term, I just think it makes no sense whatsoever, just for practical purposes. Thank you.
Okay, so this is going to charter and rules. Councilor McGivern?
I know we don't usually discuss a motion to refer to committee, but seeing we just had a discussion, not everybody is in favor of a recall petition, partly because of the language and partly because it can be abused very easily, and I know we've discussed this many times, I'm sure we're going to discuss it again, and it's worth a, worth a discussion, but, you know, recall languages open up politics to an ugliness that, we've survived 150 years without one, so I think we have to think about that before we put a ballot question out there.
All right, so, okay, Councilor Jordan.
Yeah, Councilor McGivern's 100% right. I'll only add that it's not quite accurate to say we've survived 150 years, because if we all recall at the, yeah, if we all recall up until 1936, we all had one-year terms, starting with the mayor all the way down, and then from 36 until, let's see, up until recently, of course, we're still at two-year terms, us, right, so we've been on a two-year term since 1936. The mayor, why this all kind of recirculated again is treasurer, clerk, mayor. Now, mayor was always two years, but we recently changed it to four, so that was the context as, it's great if, you know, it was sort of like the grand compromise, like, you know, we went four with a four-year mayor, but what happens when, if you get a really bad mayor, right? You need to have some mechanism, but it didn't work out, but it'll be a good discussion, and everybody makes great points.
All right, so two charter.
For the record, I was not around in 1936.
I thought so, but.
Not even close.
All right, so two charter and rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 35 is from myself and Councilor McGivern, order that the mayor be invited to finance for presentation of the five-year.
Receive, refer to committee finance.
To finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 36 for myself and Councilor Israel Rivera, order that the mayor be invited to the public safety meeting for a presentation on the police department audit.
Can I add myself to that?
Yep, adding Councilor. Murphy Rambeletti.
Mr. President?
Hold on one second. Councilor Bartley.
Do we have the, do we have the report? We have the audit? When did that come in?
I think it's supposed to be coming. I got an email that was, that we're supposed to receive at some, at some point.
Well, I mean, how do we have an order where there's two people already on, and we don't even have a report?
The mayor is here. I can suspend the rules to?
Cutting edge.
Suspend the rules, the mayor is allowing the mayor to speak.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Mayor?
Good evening, councilors.
Good evening.
Hey, so we did that to get ahead of the timeline a little bit here, so the draft is not ready. It will be ready soon, but for the purposes of, you know, process and procedure to, to, to plan for a presentation date, we figured we'd get the ball rolling ahead of time here, but we can certainly come back once it is ready, if you want to go through that, through that process. Instead, I just thought that perhaps we can get ahead of the ball a little bit by getting it in front of committee, and then at that point being able to schedule a date accordingly as, as soon as this draft is available, which is going to be any, any day now.
Councilor McGivern?
I would only suggest, thank you, Mr. Mayor, to the mayor and the president, that that's fine, getting ahead of the game, but I don't think the chair of the finance would put it on the agenda until city councilors have a copy at least five to 10 days in advance.
Correct, that's the intent, but Councilor Bacon?
That, that was my request.
Yeah.
That's why I had my hand up. Thanks.
Well, I mean, why don't we just table this, because I don't see why this should have to go to committee right now. I don't see the reason for that.
Well, and this says public safety. Did you intend for this to go to finance, Joe?
Did I say finance?
You did.
Sorry, I meant chair.
Oh, okay, okay.
My apologies to chair of public safety.
If I could, I mean, if you guys want to table it, I'm totally cool with it, too, but I get the intention of trying to get ahead. I wouldn't put it on a public safety agenda until he sent out the notes anyways, or the, the, the report anyways, but again, it's about putting in the order, and then I have it in the jacket, so that I, whenever they're ready, and they say, and we're all ready, we could just pull it out then, instead of having to file it and then have to wait for this whole process to start all over again. That's where I looked at it, and I agreed with it in that aspect, but if people want to table it, I'm cool with that, too. I got no issues.
Councilor Jordan.
I would recommend, we follow what the chairman just said, and we send it to public safety. He'll keep it there. When the mayor's all set and ready to go, we'll get an advanced copy, so we can do our homework in advance, because I'll want to have my margin notes and.
Yeah, because I don't have, I don't have a copy of it either. I'll be honest with you. So I, when I got the message, I said, like, so do we have a copy? And they said, we should have a copy, and within the next few days, but that doesn't make sense to have it at least five to 10. Isn't there an ordinance anyways, where we have to have?
We'll have it to.
Okay.
Make sure.
Thank you.
All right.
Sounds good.
To public safety, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 36, motion be receive, adopt, let me just hold on one second. Take up 38 as well. Take up 37 and 38 as a package.
38 as a package.
All those in favor?[1698.83]
Aye.
All opposed. Motion to receive, adopt, pass the first reading. The 37 is for police and then injured on duty, which is $21,464.22, which represents seven, and then 38 is for $24,115.60, also for police, that's 10. So, this is just injured on duty, the accounting procedure, so motion to be to pass the first reading unless there's questions.
Do--
Counselor Jordan.
How do you know it's 10 people?
I have a list here.
Oh, there's a second page to all these transfers that the department has required to us, sorry, Mr. President.
Could we get the list of the, is there a report like, you know, how many, how long they've been out? I think we were supposed to get a report at some point, right, about, you know, who are these people, how many, I mean, again, we have like 10% of the whole department out on injured on duty, and, you know, how, how many people, for what, how long, is that coming at some point, or?
As far as that report, a sense of what they're out for or anything, I'm not sure I'll follow up the chief, but every time we get this transfer, it will list who is on the injured on duty. As for what the injury is and how forth, no, but I will always have the number and I will always share it with the council.
Okay, well, even if we can't get the, what the injury is, that's fine, I suppose, but especially if it's, I mean, if it's not readily available information, that's fine, I have no, we can exclude that, but it would be nice to know how long the person's been injured.
Then I can follow up with--
And, and have the report with the names, the title, the pay, how much they've collected so far, you know, something, something like that, because some of these are going, I think into years, and I'm just wondering, you know, with some accounting of some of this would be nice. I know we were supposed to get a report, so. Thank you.
Counselor McGivern.
Counselor Jordan is correct, you know, we've had some general discussion, we know there are some HIPAA issues, but it is public money and there's things that can be and should be disclosed. The long-term ones, the, pretty much, it's medically and doctor-driven in terms of, you know, when the city or when the department can say, you know, if you're not coming back to work, it's time to handle this differently, there's always that possibility or that open door, open window that they're coming back to work, legally you have to allow them, you know, to continue until they're ready to come back. But there is a discussion coming, there's a lot of discussions coming, and I, hopefully soon.
All right, so, 30, Counselor Tomlin.
Yeah, I just wanted to state that, this is, Counselor Jordan made a great point, this is very important that we find out about this. I contacted the chief about maybe two, three months ago and asked about that, because it seems like every, every couple of weeks we got seven, eight, nine, 10 people.
10?
That is 10% of the force, so that affects the running of the city, that affects the overtime, it affects the manpower, how they're dealing with it on a day-to-day basis, I've talked to officers that, you know, sometimes they're working, they gotta stay over, you know, the next shift because they don't have somebody to replace them, so it's important, and I'll contact the chief again and maybe sit down and meet with him, but this is a very important issue for the safety of, you know, not just residents, but the safety of our police officers that are doing this day in and day out.
Counselor Jordan.
Just to clarify, even if we could get on the causes, I think that's what we're looking for, even if it isn't per person, if that's heavily guarded, but we need to have a classification, I believe I explained where it says, okay, wrestling a prisoner, fall, you know, injured in a cruiser accident, I mean, we need to have these broad categories of how many of these things are happening, and we are still waiting for that. The other thing I think would be helpful is, this only shows the lost salary. The chief explained at a recent finance committee that this is the number-one reason what's driving the overtime to be so high, and I think it, really, we need to start tracking it, so we have a column here that says, "This is lost salary," and the next column that says, "This is the lost overtime attributable to this person too," because it isn't just paying their salary while they're out, you now have to backfill for this position, and that's why the, you know, you're talking a million dollars in police overtime, and this is the number-one reason. Okay, thank you.
All right, so, motion is passed the first reading, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading, clerk will call if you vote yes, you're voting for 37 and 38.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Malanavales?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.